I'm going to call the city council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Spitz.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Rodley.
Here.
Stair.
Here.
Woodrow.
Here.
And Pictionary.
I'm here, thank you.
And I want to thank everybody for the patience while we had technology issues. We have two items in the work session tonight. One is American Rescue Plan of 2021 ARPA Guidance with Nate Bell, so I'm going to turn it over to Nate.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight's item is just a continuation of the conversation we started on December 6th. Just a quick recap, we brought to you a staff prioritized list of ARPA projects. And we were unable to get through that entire conversation that evening. Tonight was the first night that I could get that back in front of you. That evening, we did discuss two items. One was the share of ARPA funds with our partner Willamalane, which you provided guidance to share up to $1 million and then support, ARPA's support of the legacy streetlight replacement to the tune of about 2.75 million. So in this updated AIS, I've removed those two items and we have a new committed total of 6.15 million to date, leaving us roughly 7.8 million dollars of ARPA funds still to allocate. And with that, I can just start working down this list, or I can turn it over to you to lead the conversation.
So you're looking kind of, you're looking for a little bit of direction about what to, what to move forward to programming and then what to sort of hold off, you know, and we would have to look for other, other money for.
Correct, and we don't have to allocate the total amount tonight. I, I think what I'm really looking for is guidance for potential inclusion into a fiscal year 22 supplemental budget, or programming into our FY23 budget, which we're working on right now. And to me, why it's, it's time important is there's a lot of dollars out there competing for limited, limited labor and resources. And I think part of our success in terms of spending the entire allocation as well as getting the best value for the dollars is for us to get out as fast as we can ahead of others.
Okay. Merrily.
I went down through the list and I made arrows and all that kind of stuff, but what I'd like to hear first from you Nate, since you just mentioned it, is what? Oh, you just said it.
Inclusion of the supplemental?
Yes. Yes, what do you see that isn't, that wouldn't, that, what do you see differentiating between what we spend now and what could be included a year from now? I, my, my list. I went down through my list and what I had on my list, the differentiation I had was looking at what could be potentially the difference in cost. That a year from now is probably going to be higher than we're looking at it right now. And so would be, would it be advisable for us to really look close, more closely at the things that could really drastically change in cost, materials and labor, as opposed to maybe the, the situation maybe with the library that we might be able to work hard on for grants and, and help through the foundation and that kind of thing with things. So I'm just, I'm trying to look all, all around, but you, you just mentioned a kind of a fine dotted line, dividing line between what would be more important now and what could be put off. And I'm, I'm, I'm anxious to hear what you have to say on that.
Okay, would you like me to speak to that now or get Counselor Stair's question out there?
Yeah, why don't you see if you can address that now and then we'll move on to Leonard.
Okay, so you know, we have until December 31st, 2024, so that's less than three years at this point. Even if we get the green light on some of these items, for some of these, we'll need to do RFPs and all of that takes time. Once we get to that point where we've selected a contractor, there's also getting into their schedule. So when I look at things, you know, there's a lot of competing, I think, elements that sort of have caused some of these projects to rise to the top. Just starting with the Justice Center roof replacement, this is one that I would include in a supplemental budget so that we can start the process on finding a contractor to do the work and get into their queue, but it's also protecting an asset of ours. And you know, I don't want to take that building to the point of failure, that roof to the point of failure. So that's at the top of my list. You know, when you mention the price of something today compared to the price of something tomorrow, when I look at the City Hall space remodel as it relates to the library, that's a large enough item that I, I don't think we'll be able to do that through the foundation or grants. I think we really are going to need the support of ARPA and it's no different than any other project in terms of the cost of labor and materials. So that also rises up there. Another one too that I'm going to, you know, I think advocate for is what I call the general fund deficit, deficit spend. You know, I think the last five-year forecast that I put in front of you was sometime, I want to say back in September or October, we're constantly refining that. The most recent forecast has us deficit spend that takes us out to FY27 where we're at 4%. Our reserve is at 4% of our operating expenditures for the general fund. As I've mentioned before, we don't like to see that go below 20%. Best practice is somewhere between 20 and 25%. At the end of fiscal year 21, our ending reserve was at 27%. That's actually a little higher than I normally would want it, except for given our five-year forecast, it might make sense to keep that reserve at the highest level that we can keep it at to buy us time as we work on other solutions and addressing that structural imbalance.
Okay, I'll wait, I may have more questions, but I'll wait.
Leonard.
Thanks. Just a couple of things. The, the Carter Building, do we have any date for when the engineers are going to have their study done on the feasibility of repairing it?
I do not. Potentially Neil Ladati may have if he wants to step up.
You bet. Thanks Nathan. The engineer working on that project is in contact with our HR department, our risk manager, Tom McGleston. We think we'll have that information soon. But not a big date at this point, but it's in process.
I, I, the, the reason I ask is I would prefer to just wait until that studies back before we make a definitive decision on whether to junk the, the, the rehab of the building. The other, the, the other issue would be the, the gateway, the gateway development. I just wanted to get some sort of read on why the staff wants to take that off the table.
And so with each of these, I, I want to say that I am not an expert in any of these specific items that I've worked with a lot of individuals to pull this information together. On that particular one, I worked with Tom Boyott, and I think the general feeling was there's other funding sources that we could go after to get that work done. And if we want to maximize the value to the city, that would be the direction to go on that.
Thank you.
Joe.
Thank you. I'm just going to go ahead and go down the list. I like the list. I, I support the roof replacement of the Justice Center, pay now or pay more later. And I, you know, I think we ought to go ahead and we know it's going to fail. We know it's going to need replacement. And I think we need to move forward on that. So to spend that 450K on that. I support the City Hall internal, external security camera system to not have one, which we basically don't have is, is crazy in this time and day and age. Especially after seeing vandalism done at the jail and the only reason why they got caught was because they had some good external camera views of the perpetrators. But we don't have much for the City Hall at all. And I think that that is, it's a, a big target. Also, the, I feel the same way with the council chambers and court security. I'm all about increasing security. I think that's something that we've been waiting on for a very long time. And we need to just finally quit kicking the can down the road and, and get that built. I think for 300,000, we get a lot, a lot of bang for our buck for that, especially into the future. And I, so, so far I support the Justice Center roof replacement. The internal, external security camera system for City Hall, council chambers and court security. And that comes up to 950,000. And I'm looking at the, I'm skipping over the space remodel, but just going, jumping down into the City Hall roof and HVAC replacement. I think it makes sense for that second option is to save some money there and, and go that route. The, you know, is to leave the current system in place and replace all the units that end of life in this single project, which makes a lot of sense. And then I do support also going, jumping back up to the City Hall space remodel. It's, we're way behind the times there and I think we can make better use of that space and increase our productivity. Other than that, that's where I'm at. And I think we, that puts us right about 5.95 million in, in funds, which should leave us some surp, quite a bit of surplus for other projects.
All right, Steve.
Uh, I'm, uh, I'm for the Justice Center roof replacement. I worked on the campaign to get that thing built. I don't want to turn into another Carter building. So and then the general fund deficit spend, we have to do that. The other one is city, City Hall space remodel. That will allow expansion of the library. We really need that. So that's, that's a two thing. And the rest of them, I'll let you guys, well, I'll let you guys worry about the rest of them. Thanks.
So Merrily, do you have a quick comment? And then maybe we can just sort of check them off down the list and kind of get a little bit more organized here.
I had one quick comment, and that was I don't want to forget about the web design, either including it in this or something, but we've been talking about getting something done online for our website for what, three, four, five years? So it needs to be included in a budget somewhere.
Okay, so my sense now that we've kind of had some, some conversation about it is maybe we can just sort of stop, you know, kind of walk down the list and kind of see if people want to talk about them a little bit more. I'm hearing a lot of Justice Center roof remodel, right? Does anybody want to talk about that one anymore? Or just say, go Nate.
Go.
Go roof.
Yeah, go Nate.
Fix it, fix it.
Okay, are we fine with the supplemental budget on that in fiscal year 22, or would you rather see it programmed into fiscal year 23?
Um, I would be fine if you programmed it in the, you want to do it 23, Joe?
Yeah, if we got, if we got five years.
And we have a little less than three years at this point, but my bigger concern is around lining up contractors and getting in their queue.
Right. I think by the time you can pull the trigger, it's going to be 23 anyway.
Yes, but allows us to pull the trigger in terms of starting the FP. We, we typically don't do RFPs for things that are not budgeted yet. We try not to get in front of you. So what going through the supplemental budget process gives us the legal authority to start this procurement.
I'm okay with that too, Sean. It just, I just want to, I don't want to, I know we need to get a roof done, but I want to be able to get as much life out of what we have before we replace it, but not to the point of where it puts it at risk, like Steve was saying. You know, I definitely don't want to put anything at risk, but I like to be able to, I don't want to get things replaced prematurely.
Yeah, yeah, get as much out of it without putting it at, at risk as possible, but let Nate start looking for contractors and get it, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Um, projected general fund deficit spend for 5 million. I'm seeing some head nods. Does anybody want to talk, Leonard?
Sorry, yeah. I, but before we talked about the general fund, I, I wanted to find out if we already devoted anything to the general fund? I mean, out, have we allocated anything out of the overall ARPA funding to replenishing the general fund?
Directly, we have not.
Okay, so I guess my next question, what, what are we restricted from dedicating the funds to? I mean, are there any, are, are there any specific prohibitions on the, on the way that we can spend this money?
Very few. So what we're going to use is revenue replacement in terms of how we access these dollars and through the revenue replacement, we'll essentially be able to access all 14 million that way. That gives us the least amount of restrictions on how we use the dollars. What we can't do is we can't put them in the reserves and we can't use them for debt service. So as far as not putting them into reserves, this is where it gets a little trickier. We, it's not a matter where we can, most of our general fund expenditures aren't actual revenues tied to specific expenditures. It's a big bucket of maybe 20 plus revenues that go towards all of our expenditures that span all of our departments in the general fund. But when it comes to grant funding, you have to point at something very specifically. It has to be a accounts payable invoice. It has to be a time card. And so the devil's kind of in the details, but there is staffing that we are adding that is new in the general fund and our inclination is to put this funding towards that. That's staffing that would have just come out of the reserve. By allocating this funding to those positions, we can avoid hitting the reserves and keep that reserve at 20, as close to 27% as we can.
So, so we can't just wave our hand and say, spending on road repairs. We would have to say, repair Mohawk Boulevard or something like that.
So typically, we don't repair roads out of the general fund. That's done with the street fund. So that's a whole nother use if, if you want to go down that path.
Okay, that, that was sort of what I was driving at. I, I, I am definitely for replenishing the general fund. I, I would love to see a lot of the programs that, that have absorbed budget cuts, get, get refunded. And so that's, that's my first priority.
And we're not looking at the entire 5 million. As I've mentioned before, that five-year forecast has been a moving target. We have to have this money spent by December 31st, 2024, and that touches in fiscal year 25. So if I look at the deficit spend in our latest projection through 25, we're looking at roughly 3.2 million. So that's already considerably less than the 5 million. And then what's more is we don't have to do the entire 3.2, we can do a lesser amount.
So I guess what I'm hearing is if we say that we want to sort of maintain service levels where we, we are in the next five years, that's kind of what we're head nodding tonight. And then you guys are going to go back and sort of size that, knowing that 5 million's the cap and actually bring us back probably a better number so that you, so that we understand what we're actually doing. But essentially what we're directing you to do is, hey, maintain, you know, even out the ups and downs, maintain the service levels that we currently have for the next five years.
And preserve our reserve. And I would actually say, since I put this together, the cap would now be 3.2 million or less.
Okay, Cory.
Well, Nathan touched on it at the end because I just wanted some clarification around that year period and what that looked like. So that's why I put my hand down because I feel like you answered it before I even asked it. Because my understanding was just that that was an anticipated coverage of that, which is what you said. So I'm, I'm, I'm absolutely for prioritizing the, this.
Okay, so and we're going to pencil it in at 3.2, it sounds like. And then, right, is that what Nate, what you're saying the new number is?
That would be the maximum, and that's based on a projection. And so if, if I was to be conservative, I would probably pencil it in probably around two to two and a half million towards this specific.
Okay, so, okay, so right now, we're going to cut it from, we're, we're going to cut it from five. We'll have a little bit more and we'll get some more information.
Yeah, keep talking. We're making money here.
I know.
All right. Um, Damian.
Um, so just, just clarification, these decisions that we're making tonight, are they final? Or will they be other things? Because I, I just see, once we have our planning session, I mean, there are things that I, I plan on bringing up that might take away from this and I'm just trying to get some clarification.
Nothing's, nothing's ever final until it's in a budget and it sounds like we're going to be a little bit under what we have tonight. So we'll be able to talk, talk about it a little bit more during goal setting.
Okay.
But like what, what, what we're telling the staff to do right now is to get direction to start building, building budgets associated to it so we can officially adopt it and, you know, make it happen. Okay. Um, Steve?
Well, we've, we've saved so much money on the, on the, on the deficit thing. Now I'll, I'll support the security system, camera system and council chambers and certain court security as well as the City Hall remodel. That's pretty good deals. That's where I am on that.
Yeah, so in that, I'm going to kind of go down that list, see outside security cameras, right? Is that something everybody's good with?
Yep.
Okay. And the council security and court security is something we've talked about historically. Are people sort of good with that?
Yep, yes.
Uh, could, could I wait, could I weigh in on the security?
Sure.
On, on the council chambers? Is this going to include this plexiglass window in, in front of us at the, in the council, council chambers?
So no specific decisions have been made on what that looks like.
I, I, I've just got sort of a visceral reaction to the idea of having that bank teller window in front of us at the, at the city council meetings. And, you know, I, I would definitely, put it this way, I would like to discuss that again before we decide to implement it.
So we're working with pivot architecture on this project. We've tied it in with the larger city hall remodel in terms of estimates. So whatever we do will be coming back in front of you with ideas.
Yeah, so we would get to approve the design. Okay. Um, City Hall remodel. Are people good with that or want to talk about that at all? Okay. Um, HVAC replacement, I feel like, yeah, but I don't know that we're going to have enough money to dive into that one. So this is still probably a big outstanding need that we've got. Go ahead, Leonard. Okay. Um, so here's my sense. I think we leave this one on the list. It's still a project we have to have and, and then let's maybe come back, come back to it. We're going to have to, like Nate, I'm doing back to the math and math, like that's the one that we can't, that, that we can't fit, if you will.
Well, if we do two to two and a half million on the deficit spend, that leaves us roughly 4.4 to 4.9 million left right now from everything that you've said yes to. So that does squeak us into that lower end number. The other thing too is this, you know, you asked for us to tighten these numbers up, but this is one that was difficult to tighten up. We would really need to hire an engineer to come in and, and kind of estimate this project for us. We've already got out there and got an estimate of what that would cost. Just give us a project and a cost associated with that project. And that's around 45 million, 45, $45,000.
Don't hire that person again. They're going the wrong way.
Um, I'm used to talking to millions tonight, 45,000.
Um, so why don't we do, could, could we do this? Could we maybe punt this conversation and we can pick, and we can talk about it during, sort of during goal setting and let you guys kind of sharpen it down a little bit, a little bit more. Right? Because it's, it sounds like you guys need a little bit more, more work on this particular project to figure out what exactly we need.
I think it would be money well spent to just move forward and working with an engineer to really kind of tease out our, our needs and what associated costs would be.
Okay.
We're going to use that in one form of another and another, whether we do it slowly over time as we can afford it, or whether we do it in one large project, it would ni, it'd be nice to know exactly what we're trying to do.
Okay, so, so you would bring it back to us in like, you know, and you can do it in a memo if you want, or we could talk about, you know, fight about sort of phase one, hire an engineer to figure out what exactly this is.
Okay, yes. And I'd be inclined to do that through supplemental budget in fiscal year 22, if you're comfortable with that. Some of that work has already been done. It wouldn't be hard to put this together into a packet to come in front of you.
Okay, are, are people good with that? Okay. And then, then the website enhancement, I heard people were like, I don't, do we know how much that would cost right now? I know that the.
I don't have any estimates on that right now. They're in the process of doing surveys to just understand what our needs are as it relates to the website. If we don't have funding here, there is another source of funds that we have that, that council discretion that we could potentially use for that.
Okay, but I think you're good, you're good going forward with that one. I'm seeing, Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, we're just thinking that maybe, maybe Nathan was thinking the same thing too. It seems like there, that ticket project would be the room tax eligible. At least part of it.
Um, that would be a conversation to have. I, I couldn't speak to that off the cuff, but we have those, some dollars that we set aside from the top of my head, it was from the Comcast settlement. And I'm going to look to Neil Ladati again on that.
Yeah, that's correct, Nathan. We do have those dollars. We have not moved and that might be a potential.
And that was, wasn't that Neil, the, some of the source we're looking at for potentially for the security systems?
Initially, yes. Yeah, but we may be able to use the ARPA for that.
Right.
And have some flexibility with that funding.
Would be great.
Okay, so we're yes to what, website enhancement. All right, so Nate, do you need more direction than that?
I've got plenty of direction actually at this point, so no.
Excellent. So that should leave us by our, by back, you know, a little bit of money left over is what I would see.
Uh, with, with, if, depending on how you look at the HVAC system, but that entire sum essentially is left out there hanging, kind of depended on what the engineers come back with.
Perfect, perfect. All right. Great. Um, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So it's our annual comprehensive financial report. And I think Meg, you're up for this one.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm Magalaco, your accounting manager, and we're here today to present the fiscal year 21 annual comprehensive financial report for the city of Springfield. And since not everyone geeks out on the audit like we do, we'll just hit the highlights. And the accounting entries, statements, notes, statistical tables, those are all prepared by accounting staff here in the city and they're audited by an outside independent CPA firm. And the city has engaged Grove Mueller and Swank to audit the financial statements. And Ryan Pascarella is the partner in charge of our audit and he's here to share his opinion on the financial statements. So I'll turn that over to Ryan.
Thank you, Meg. Thank you for letting me join you this evening. As Meg said, my name is Ryan Pascarella. I work for Grove Mueller and Swank. We are a CPA firm out of Salem. And we have about 35 staff in our office at this point. So our office does approximately, oh, let's say probably 90 audits throughout the year. About 60 of those are municipal audits that have a June 30 year end. So we just finished up a very busy season for ourselves. We'll put it that way. I'm here to talk a little bit about how the audit went for the June 30 fiscal year 2021. And just like Meg said, just give a few highlights and really just talk about a few differences in what is in the reports this year versus what we have seen historically in the report. So as part of this, I am going to just share my screen here and you should have received at some point here, really three separate reports. We perform the audit of the annual comprehensive financial report, which I'll get to in a minute. But there is also a audit, a federal compliance audit where we look specifically at federal dollars that are spent and make sure they are in compliance with the grant requirements. And so I will talk about that document briefly as well. If there are any questions as I'm going through this, please stop me, ask the questions. I'm happy to ask, answer questions as we go along. And Meg, if you want to chime in and say something that works fine too. I do love your background there, by the way. I don't think that's a live shot at this point, but that's definitely a good way. So the first thing I'm going to show you here is that this is what's called the governance letter. So this is the communication between our auditing firm and the city council, really just outlining the responsibilities of the audit and then pointing out any significant things that need to be communicated. We do not always get the opportunity to sit in front of the city council and talk about how the audit went. So this letter kind of stands in that place when we're not able to do the presentation. But since I'm able to do the presentation, we'll just kind of go down through the letter. And obviously this allows more opportunity for you to ask questions as we go through it. The first section I want to point out is kind of really just outlining what an audit really is. And so the second paragraph under the responsibility section here, it lays out that an audit, basically professional audit standards have us obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatements. So it does not mean that I am giving 100% absolute assurance that there are no material errors in the financial statements. that there are no material errors in the financial statements. We can't do that because we don't look at every transaction that happens during the year. We use sampling, um, we use a risk assessment process that says basically, okay, what's new this year? What's significantly different from the prior year? Let's go concentrate on that and let's make sure the city is handling that correctly. Um, and clearly we look at large transactions that happen during the year, but we don't look at every five dollar transaction that happens. We really rely on the city's internal control process to make sure that some of that, um, to make sure those transactions are accurate. So professional auditing standards tell us we are giving reasonable assurance versus absolute assurance. I just think that's important to point out because when you look at the annual comprehensive financial report, you're gonna see a whole lot of numbers in there and we are just saying that they are materially accurate. But please don't think that every single number in there we have audited to the dollar and is one hundred percent accurate. That is not what an audit is attempting to do. Um, so there's that. It also says in here that we are going to communicate to you any significant matters related to the audit, and that's really why I'm here this evening, just to talk about how the audit went. And if there were any significant matters to communicate that with you. On page two of this letter, there is this large section with a whole bunch of bullet points in here. This is another reason why we are getting reasonable assurance. Um, there are a lot of accounting estimates that are built into these financial reports, and here's a whole list of them for you. Um, we point out a few that are more significant, more sensitive in the next area. And so there are estimates in here. The big ones really are the net, basically the unfunded liability of PERS that the city has that's calculated annually. Um, it's your proportionate share of it. So that is a very large number sitting in your books. It's not something that you're paying specifically. You know, pay period to pay period, you're making your, um, your required contributions essentially into PERS. This is a calculated number that gets added on the end. Um, the fair market value investments is in there, your self insured through your health insurance. So that's an estimate that's in there. Quite a few things in there. It's not just money in, money out within the financial statements. The area I always like to point out is, so basically the finance department gives us their final numbers for the year. And then we're like, yay, we can start our audit and we go through and we audit those numbers. This section here where it talks about uncorrected and corrected misstatements. This is where we would disclose to you if numbers that were provided to the auditing team, we ended up saying, we don't think that's accurate. We're gonna propose this adjustment to you, um, and then the city can accept it, that, that proposal or not. Um, generally speaking, if they get accepted. Um, for this audit, there were no audit adjustments that were proposed to the city. The numbers that were provided to the auditing team, we felt were materially accurate. And so we did not propose any adjustments this year. There were some adjustments that were made, um, because the city was still trying to finalize a few of the areas. Um, as we were working through the audit, that's just kind of the way, really the last two years of audits have gone. Um, you're real close with your numbers, but we still need to finish capital assets or we still need to finish long term debt. You know, the city tells us that. So we go ahead and make their adjustments as we're working through it. But we did not find anything that we told them we think was inaccurate, once they provided us their, their final information. So that's about as good as you can get from your financial number standpoint. Um, that makes the audit go much quicker. Okay, after that, it just goes into a little bit of detail about some of the opinions that we really do give um, throughout the financial statements. Um, and then attached to this is basically a six page letter, and this is management representing that they have told us that they have not held anything back related to the audit. All transactions have been recorded in the system. There were no conversations they didn't have with us about potential litigation of the city or commitments of the city. Um, so this is the city representing to the auditors, everything has been communicated to us. This is yet again, another reason why we give reasonable assurance over absolute assurance because we really rely on the city. Um, because it's the city that's seeing all the day to day transactions. We are in there for two weeks, maybe three weeks throughout the entire year. Um, so we, this is a requirement of the audit and we really do rely on the city saying what happened during the year. So that is the governance letter. The next document here, this is your annual comprehensive financial report. And I, I say that very slowly because for many, many, many years, this was the comprehensive annual financial report. This is the first year where the two first words have been switched. And now it is the annual comprehensive financial report. Um, accounting standards asked us to switch the name. Um, and so now this is your act for um, that we are going to be talking about instead. And this is the first year this is in place. So like I said, I struggle through that name every time I have this. Uh, there is no real significant changes to what you see in this document is most of you have seen this in prior years. This is a two hundred and twenty page document, um, that has basically starts with some real more narrative information for you, some prepared info, information and gets into more and more detail as you go down through two hundred and twenty pages of this document. So I'm going to point out just a few pages in here that I, a few sections that I think are helpful. On page, starting on page eleven of the act for, you're gonna have your transmittal letter. And this is a, just a good description of kind of what the audit is, what, you know, what the city is and some, you know, economic issues within the city. It's just basically as you scroll down through it, it is a narrative that is very simple to read, including graphs and stuff. So very nice read in here. Once you get past the transmittal letter, you are going to have my audit opinion. So Meg said the finance department puts this document together. I have, I want to say five pages in this entire document that are mine. Everything else the city created. Um, so there's two reports in here and that's really all that's in here. This report, yet again, go kind of go straight down through management's responsibilities, my responsibilities as the auditor. Um, but if you read this, what you're really going to see is um, we give an opinion that says that we feel that these financial statements are fairly represented and are, you know, we're giving a reasonable assurance on it. Um, if you want to sum that up in a word, we're saying we're giving a clean opinion on this act for and we don't feel that there are any material misstatements within it. The clean opinion is basically the, the best opinion, obviously, that you can get. We don't think there's any changes that need to be made to it. Uh, the city historically gets, um, a clean opinion on this document and that's continuing again this year. But once you get past the other opinion, here's the management discussion and analysis. Yet again, more narrative. Very helpful if you want to know what happened last year, what happened this year. Um, and really just talked about the changes between years and any significant things that have really happened during the year. For those people that, like, like Meg and I, that, you know, kind of live and breathe these spreadsheets and doing, you know, all of this work. The narrative sections are a very good option for you at this point. So, um, definitely feel like, you know, read through that and it'll give you a whole lot of what happened right here. Once you get past the management discussion and analysis, this is tiny, right? I absolutely know it. So this, if you want to call this something, this is a balance sheet. It's called a state of net position. That's the, the, how it's being reported for a government entities. That's the requirement. It's really your balance sheet. So you're gonna see, everything's broken out between your governmental activities, your business type activities. Governmental, primarily, these are the things that are funded through property taxes. Your street fund is going to be in here. Um, things like that. Uh, when you get into the business type, you know, that's kind of your sewer fund. That's more the businesses that the, the organization is running versus just what's being paid through property taxes. So when you look at this, you've got assets of about three hundred and seventy seven million. Okay, and you've got liabilities of about a hundred and thirty five million sitting in here. One of the things I mentioned earlier was the city's, um, portion of the, uh, you know, of the PERS net pension liability. So basically PERS is underfunded. And so the city has its proportionate share, seventy one million dollars is sitting there as the city's net pension liability, um, as it relates. I think, or maybe the CRP program is in there as well. Um, but that's your net pension liability that is sitting there. Um, so pretty good amount of the total liabilities here are basically what you're gonna owe PERS over many years going forward in there. Since there was a comment about the general fund earlier, um, I figured I would just scroll to this page. I didn't really, wasn't planning on it, but I will now. Um, so here's your general fund as of June thirty twenty one, about fifteen million in assets. Um, and you have basically, it's called unassigned. This is money that basically is gonna be used at the discretion of the city. Um, there are no restrictions against this or anything. So the general fund had a little over ten million dollars sitting in there that can be used for, for kind of projects or something. Um, I wanted to point this out because that's ten million dollars. A good rule of thumb is that the general fund um, has about six months of carryover money into the next year. So when you're kind of looking at, okay, what are our total expenses in the general fund? Hopefully about half of that, you have a half of that sitting is as an unassigned balance. So you've got about ten million dollars sitting here as of the end of the year. I'm gonna go down one more page here. Your expenditures are about forty million for the year. So you've got three months worth of money sitting there. That's really considered carryover money. Um, and I say rule of thumb, um, there's all, all kinds of, you know, different thinking on it, but it's always good to just have carryover money in that general fund. So not quite what that rule of thumb is, but, um, more than I have seen in some other organizations at that point. Um, I mentioned, I wanted to mention a few changes that happened within the documents. Here is one of the changes essentially. So the city, they have their money, absolutely, you know, you know, collecting revenues, expenditures, all of that. But the city is also holding money on behalf of, but, um, other organizations or employees or something. So part of this financial statement, you, you report what is in the city's, you know, bank accounts in the LGIP, but really isn't city money. Um, so this, um, statement of the due sharing net position was actually in here last year. This was required last year and it just kind of shows when you look down in here, how much is being held for the health reimbursement accounts. Um, you've got bail, you got regional fiber, MWMC is in here. And then I think the bulk of this is probably gonna be the, the ambulance money that's collected and turned over to other governments. But there's about ninety million that is in city accounts that belongs to somebody else. The change that would happen this year, this is a brand new statement within the document. Um, and will be in here going forward. And basically they wanted to show how much comes into these accounts and leaves these accounts during the year. There is a lot of activity um, with, that the city is handling that isn't really city activity. It's MWMCs or regional fibers or something else. So this is a new statement and it basically just reconciles down to here's your nine, ninety million dollars that you're holding on behalf of other people. So um, that is something new in here. The last thing I want to mention in this report, and I'll just go kind of the last page. Okay, so I said I have five, basically five pages of mine in this document. First was auditor's opinion. Okay, and then this is the state compliance report where, uh, the secretary of state's office asks us to look at some very specific areas to make sure you're complying with Oregon or vice statute. So all these bullet points, these are, when applicable, these are what we are auditing. Um, on top of looking at the numbers themselves. So the one thing I want to point out in here is down here near the bottom, it says, you know, we didn't, didn't anything come to our attention. Nothing came to our attention except for the, the city exceeded the LGIP maximum balance allowed um, at different times during the year essentially. Um, so this is being reported as non-compliance, uh, to the secretary of state's office. Um, but there's really nothing that the city needs to do related to this as far as communicating back with the secretary of state. A pretty minor thing. I think the maximum balance that you could hold in that investment pool was about fifty two million dollars, uh, during the year. And I think last time I checked, you were about sixty eight million or something like that. So anyway, you, you were over a little bit on that. So we reported that. No other non-compliance related to the minimum standard work here. Final document, and I'm basically gonna go down to the bottom page of this. Um, this is the federal grant compliance report. So I mentioned that when the city spends, um, really when the city spends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal money in one fiscal year, this audit kicks in. Um, so when you go down past my reports, um, you're gonna see, here is a list of all the federal money expended during the fiscal year. And it's split out by the different funding stream, the different grants, really. So lots of, lots of stuff going on. Total was about three point three million spent during the year. Um, and basically there's a, a way that we determine what programs we're gonna audit. Uh, we looked at the coronavirus relief fund, this one point three million dollars sitting here. Um, that, so basically we looked at what the money was allowed to be spent for. Um, and we made sure that it was spent on things that were allowable under, under that program. So here's my, really my findings, which are none, honestly. Um, but what it says basically is, did we find any material issues with how your internal controls are working? No. Did we find any significant deficiencies that we felt should be communicated? Basically something that's not a material issue, but maybe a little bit less. No, nothing. No material issues in non-compliance that we found. We're giving you a clean opinion. Here's the program we looked at and no findings. So this is boilerplate. If there's no issues, this is what you get in here. One thing I will point out in here is this says, uh, does the city qualify as a low risk audit team? This says yes. So there are rules that apply as far as when you become a low risk audit team. What that means is I only have to audit twenty percent of your federal dollars spent instead of forty percent. If you were high risk, we audit forty percent, um, which never makes clients happy because that's more programs who look at more money, obviously. Uh, one of the criteria to be low risk is you need to have two clean federal compliance audits in a row. And then that third year, you are considered a low risk audit team. So the last two years, you've had federal compliance audit. I mean, you did not the year before that. So this is the first year we're actually recording you as a low risk audit team. So really we only need to do twenty percent. Um, feds told us coronavirus relief was a very important program to look at. Um, they call it, it's a higher risk program in their minds. So we looked at that, which makes perfect sense. Brand new program. Everybody has to figure out how to spend the money. Um, and, and there are findings that we are having with other clients related to this program, but nothing with the city of Springfield here. So that is my presentation.
All right, I'm doing a little bit of a time check. We got about seven minutes left. Um, does anybody have questions or comments, um, before we I'm looking around. All right. Ryan, it's always good to see you annually. Um, thank you for taking, uh, taking the time to make sure our books are, uh, straightened out. I know it's a little bit of a technical work, but it's, it's important work. So
It is.
With that, we are gonna, I'm going to adjourn, uh, the work session. We will return in five minutes on the same, uh, the same meeting link and then we'll do the public, uh, the public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Can we just stay on this link?
Yeah, Leonard.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
There's cookies at my house if you want to come over. They may be gone by the time you get up here, Leonard. It's a little bit of a
Yeah, I'm not liking my odds. And there are lots of odds down here.
Are you staying in the downtown area?
No, this is, this is on the strip. The, I've been warned away from the downtown area, which means that I'm going to have to see it before I leave.
You're in Reno, not Vegas, right?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, now, now Old Thoughts Vegas is is a real delight. If you, if you ever wanted to try to taste a fried Twinkie, that's the, that's the place. A deep fried Twinkie.
AJ, are you ready to go?
I am ready when you are.
I'm going to call the Springfield City Council regular session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Pitts.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Stare.
Here.
Counselor Woodrow.
Here.
And Counselor Pictionary.
I'm here, thank you.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag.
Of the United
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
Republic.
For which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us online to please keep yourself on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. There will be two times this evening designated for public testimony and will be listed as business from the audience in public hearings on the agenda. If you're using, if you're joining us online with a tablet, smartphone, or computer and wish to speak during that time, please use the raise hand feature when the agenda is called. When we call your name, please state your name and ward or general location for the record. First item, please.
Mayor, the first item is the consent calendar.
I'm ready, Steve.
Okay, I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Back up.
It's been moved by Counselor Mo and seconded by Counselor Pictionary. Can you call the roll, Neil?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Hi.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Hi.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Hi.
The motion passes six to zero. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearings. You have two public hearings this evening. Public hearing number one, the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-seven Capital Improvements Program, a community reinvestment plan. Jeff Pascal is here for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Back again, this time with the CIP as you saw it. Well, not quite as you saw it in the work session. It's now being combined, all the parts into a book, as you can see in your attachment. So all the parts that you did read through or had the opportunity to read through and look at two weeks ago are the same. There are no major changes. Nothing's been added. It's ready for a public hearing, following public hearing in any testimony. I'm here to answer any questions, any other comments, and then asking the council to adopt the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-seven Capital Improvement Program. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Jeff before we open the public hearing? All right, then I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And anybody who's wishing to testify to this topic, please raise your hand.
Mayor, it looks like we have one hand so far for this topic. Your first speaker is Dennis Wirek. Dennis, you should be able to unmute your microphone on your side.
Dennis, you're still muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can, Dennis.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm the chairman of the B-PAC Committee. And I'd like to say good evening and thank you, Counselors, for your continued service during the stressful times that COVID nineteen has created. My name is Dennis Wirek, and it's been my privilege to be the chairman of the B-PAC Committee for the past year. And as an advisory committee to the city of Springfield and city staff and council, I would like to present an overview of our year-end report, which our senior traffic planner, Emma Newman, has provided, yes?
Um, are, are you going to give comments to the Capital Improvement Program? So?
I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong place then. I should be in public.
Yep, that's okay.
Thank you.
All right, as we'll bring you back up during the public comment, we do have another hand up. Mayor, it's Teresa Rourke. Teresa, you should be able to unmute your microphone on your side.
Hi, I am Teresa Rourke. I am also a voting member of the Springfield Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Board, and I would like to give public comment on the Capital Improvement Program recommendation. So in considering the projects outlined as potential capital improvement program or SIP projects, the B-PAC is recommending that four projects be prioritized. This recommendation was developed based on community advocacy, B-PAC member engagement, and a desire to focus bicycle and pedestrian investment in areas of the city that have a higher proportion of people living without individual vehicles. The B-PAC recommends focusing on Laura Street, West D Street, E Street Bike Way, and Forty-Eighth Street, G Street, Fifty-Second Street Path. I want to highlight the timeliness of the Laura Street project. Since Lane County has scheduled upgrades, including bicycle and pedestrian-focused upgrades to other portions of the street for twenty twenty-four, I also want to recognize the continued community advocacy that the B-PAC has received to take this opportunity to ensure that West D, which is a particularly key piece of Springfield's bike and pedestrian infrastructure, is the welcoming front door to our community that it should be, including continued consideration of safety infrastructure such as protected bike lanes. The B-PAC recommends continued investment throughout the city in infrastructure such as ADA ramps, lighting, bike lanes, and separation between bike lanes and vehicles, as well as working to ensure investments are made throughout the city, but especially in parts of the city where folks have fewer vehicles and higher numbers of people living in poverty. We believe these investments will increase accessible transportation for all community members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have one more speaker with a hand raised under this Capital Improvements Project item, and that is Kevin Campbell. And Kevin, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Thank you, Counselor. This is Kevin Campbell. I am also a voting member of the B-PAC Subcommittee. And I would like to emphasize some of the points that Teresa has just made regarding the recommendations that we have made to council in terms of which capital improvement projects we see as being the most valuable to the bike and pedestrian community. I wanted to create a little bit of context about how the committee goes on to choose these particular projects. And I wanted to emphasize that we have ourselves a portion of our meetings where we get public input. And particularly on the West D recommendation, we have had consistent participation from the community and consistent request from the community to have a long-term solution created there. Beyond that, we'd like to also just mention that we're very happy with a lot of the attention to improved lighting, improved lane marking and striping for cyclists and pedestrians, and some of the small improvements that have come along with the modifications to recent projects, such as the Mohawk build-out. We do definitely understand that the resources in delegating and choosing these projects are limited. But we have taken that into consideration and believe that some of the projects listed on our considerations meet both the timeliness and the cost-effectiveness that the city would want to achieve in promoting both cycling and these road improvement projects. And in all of our considerations, we also do really try to emphasize both community input and also a sense of equality, equity, and practicality in where resources could be effectively used and later utilized for a broad and robust pedestrian cyclist commuter network. Thanks for your time.
Mayor, that appears to be all the hands for this item.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And let's see if, does anybody have any discussion points before we proceed to a motion?
Therefore?
Let, oh, okay. I think Leonard wants
Leonard, Leonard.
Leonard.
I really just wanted to thank all of the B-PAC members for their input, and we're taking these street improvements very seriously. Thank you.
Steve.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-seven Capital Improvement Program.
Any reimbursement, reinvestment plan? I second.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Mo, seconded by Counselor Pictionary to approve the capital reinvestment plan. And Neil, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Hi.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Hi.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
All right.
Motion passes six to zero. Next item, please.
All right, thank you.
Next item is the new, sorry, public hearing number two, the new fee encroachment type two. Resolution number one, a resolution amending the Springfield master fees and charges schedule to adopt a new encroachment permit type two fee. Sam Kelly Quatroki and Kyle Green are here for the staff report. But they're on their way.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I apologize for the technical delay there. Again, I'm Sam Quatroki. I'm joined this time by Kyle Green for one last master fees and charges update for you all. So this time, we're adding, we're looking at adding a new fee that the engineering staff has worked on. This is the type-two encroachment permit. So we're looking for questions, comments, public hearing, and a resolution adoption. Just a quick, maybe refreshing this fee, there currently is an encroachment permit fee and the public improvement permit, and the encroachment permit's a lower end of about three hundred and fifty dollars. The public improvement permit is about nine thousand dollars. And there's no real middle room there for medium-sized projects that are required stamping, like a public improvement permit does, but are not as complicated as some of the massive projects we get. So Kyle and his team came forth and proposed this type-two encroachment permit, sticking the price right in the middle. This hopefully bring down public improvement permit costs, while leaving the current encroachments, the type ones, unfazed, and provide more of a middle ground option for some of these somewhat, but not incredibly complicated, projects. At this time, I mean, Kyle, if you want to provide more clarification, you could. Otherwise, I would turn it back to the mayor and council.
Yeah, Sam, you did a great job of providing an overview, and the intent here is to not take anything away. As Sam's mentioning, it's just to add more options, because that is a pretty big difference when you're looking at doing some work in the right of way and either a three hundred and fifty-dollar-ish bill or a nine thousand dollar bill to do that. And so for those projects where, you know, you might be doing a a little bit more involved than what it would be appropriate for an encroachment permit, but you don't want to step all the way up to that nine thousand dollar entry fee for PIP, as we call it. This will provide that additional option, so. Other questions?
So I'm not sure how many people here understand what an encroachment is. What are they applying for and what type of project is covered? And I'm not reporting that I know. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, sure, great question. An encroachment permit is probably the most classic example. Somebody that wants to hook up to a public sewer line, and there doesn't, there isn't one that exists for their property, but they're right adjacent to it, or it runs through their backyard or in the street in front of their home. An encroachment permit is a permit that the city grants to that person or their contractor to allow them to cut into the street. grants to that person or their contractor to allow them to cut into the street, make that tap to the wastewater, and then, you know, backfill and repave it and restore it. Um, that's probably the most straightforward, simple one. There's also encroachment permits that go out for utilities to do utility work like Comcast or Springfield Utility Board, so on and so forth. Uh, it involves, it could involve traffic control, temporary traffic control, or other things of that nature.
Oh, um, I I think this is a great move forward, and I, and because especially with that particular example you're talking about, I think we want to encourage people to do sewer hookups, for sure. Um, but I'm, so I guess, uh, I I support this, but I'm wondering, is it, it's gonna help some folks, but are we? I guess I'm trying to look at, I wanted to help the little guy, the guy that's trying to do some stuff at home. I I don't really give, I then I'm saying this very gently, but I don't really give a rip about whether it helps big corporations or agencies or whatever. I want to be able to see, uh, private persons, private development, be able to get some of this stuff done for a lot less money. And if we have to put it on the burden of the bigger agencies. So I don't want to see the agencies getting reduced costs, frankly.
Yeah, and the the intent here is to help, as you call it, the the little guy. When we look at, uh, probably one of the biggest projects we have right now, Markola Meadows, you know, that is far above and beyond what would qualify for an encouragement permit type two. Um, that is a, you know, it's a subdivision or multiple phases of a subdivision that's well in excess of what we're looking at for something like this. This would be, you know, um, instead of just doing a sewer tap, maybe there's a small sewer extension to to get another hundred feet of sewer so that your property is available to be hooked up. Um, that requires a professional engineer to do stamp design plans and inspections and, uh, you know, a lot more involved than, um, the classic example of a sewer tap. So instead of going to the nine thousand dollar, uh, deposit, which again, these are deposits, so staff bills time towards it through review and inspection and things, and whatever's left over goes back to the developer at the end of the process, once everything's approved and accepted and, uh, we accept it into our system. So there's a good chance on these small to mid-size projects that, uh, instead of getting a hefty deposit refunded, you know, it'll reduce that refund, but the upfront cost is half. So that's the balance we're trying to strike here.
If I'm understanding you correctly, if it's a small project and they only put in so much time, the the lower quote-unquote fee, the only, the only thing we're doing that is just requiring a lower deposit.
That is the best, biggest benefit, yes.
So they're not really saving anything?
Well, they're, they're able to take that money that they would have put the extra forty-five hundred dollars into the deposit and use it towards their project.
Okay, well, so so they're not saving anything. It's just a matter of letting the money be available now instead of later. Sure, sure. Okay. Just trying to see the advantage of having this, and thanks.
Steve.
Yeah, Joe sort of took the took my argument away because I was gonna ask Kyle if if the example that you gave is a type-one or type-two encroachment permit.
The example of the sewer extension or the example of the sewer tap?
A sewer tap, just a short one.
Just the sewer, the sewer tap is just the regular type-one that we currently have. That's approximately three hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, so, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, then I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing.
It's like we have one hand raised at this time. Uh, looks like two to talk about the, uh, encroachment fee permit. Um, the first speaker is Chris McAllister. And, uh, Chris, oh, go ahead.
Good evening, council and, uh, members of the public. My name is Chris McAllister, and I live on Twelfth and Piedmont in Ward Three. Um, I just want to share my concerns about the connecting into our city system, uh, especially for folks out in the UGB such as in Glenwood. Um, a couple of years back, we had a gentleman named Jim Guthrie who was trying to tie into the sewer, uh, but two organizations right in front of him got septic, and they, after all the permits and the fees and all that stuff was cleared, it was a cost closer to a hundred thousand than it was to not, and all he wanted to have was access to, uh, to city water, to city plumbing, and to our local police to deal with local issues. And so I support the work of this community. I support the work of our staff. I just want to make sure that if there is a way to interface, especially when other corporations or situations are, uh, are making their own personal decisions, that our poor people, our middle class can tie into services and make these permits go further, because four thousand on top of one permit, on top of another permit, on top of another permit, when people built in front of you or built around you because they're trying to be part of the new developments. That's what concerns me for the people who've lived in Springfield all their lives and don't have the money to tie into something because the city moved, not them. I thank you all for your service.
Mayor, it looks like we have no other hands for this particular item.
I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and see if there's any other conversations or questions or discussion. Leonard?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to thank Chris McAllister for his testimony. Does, uh, does anyone on staff have any information about, um, what the disposition of Mr. Guthrie's issue was?
I, uh, believe I'm aware of what the situation that led up to it is. Uh, as far as what the outcome was, I I cannot say, but I, what I will add is that in the case of, so we're talking about the permit to, um, approve the plans to hire a contractor to do the work. It does not, the permit fee does not include anything about the actual cost for the contractor to do the work. So if somebody is going to extend the public sewer system, um, so there's the the fee and the plans and and the city's, uh, portion of it, but the developer then pays the cost to do the physical construction of it. And if you're talking several hundred feet, then that number, uh, grows very large very quickly, um, which I suspect is the case in the example that was just given.
So the major expense was not actually the permit itself. The the main, the main expense to the owner was the pipe that extended to the city sewage.
Yeah, the construction cost would have been, um, far above any of the permitting.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Guthrie, uh, I know him, and I haven't followed up on this, but I remember when all this came up. But Jim Guthrie's property is is one property behind Dairy Mart. Uh, Dairy Mart's not in the city limits. So when, when he ran into the situation where he was forced to hook to the sewer, he's not, he's not in the city. He can't annex the city because you have to be contiguous to do that. And so that was a, that was a nightmare for him. I I need to check, see how it was resolved, but it was a situation where down, down the road, somebody is forced to do that, their property becomes, has very little value. And I don't like that happening, so.
And and I think this particular issue is probably outside of really the scope of the permit we're talking about.
Um, yeah, sorry, just, I just, I just brought it up when we started talking about it.
Oh, no, I, yeah, I understand. Like, with the, these particular, like, there's probably been a couple that, you know, have come up over the years, and they're, you know, they're really nuanced, and obviously something we're, we're concerned about. So I don't, if people want more information, we can ask staff for more information specific to those, but it's not uh, into this permit. Any other questions? Okay, um, before we entertain a motion, um, the, the only other thing, you know, and I think we've heard the, uh, there's been the thread of that in some of the questions people have asked is, yeah, the, this is a cash flow issue, but for these smaller permits, it would be nice to look for, um, and we do not have to answer it tonight, but it would be nice to look for something that would be a financial gain where we could reduce the permit, the permit costs. And I'm asking that question, and, you know, we, like I said, take that one, one away and just look for different places where maybe we can eliminate a step. Maybe we don't have to charge these smaller permits the tech fee, right, but helping out, you know, some, uh, you know, small-time, you know, mom and pop-type businesses or folks is a good thing.
Yeah, I, I've always hoped staff would be understandable and understanding and flexible if they can, because that's a real shocker when you get up that high, high end of the erosion permit.
Yeah. Um, Steve. We'll write for motion when you're ready.
All right, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number one.
Second.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number one. Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Hi.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Hi.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Hi.
The motion passes six to zero. Next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is business from the audience. And, uh, whoever would like to speak would just need to raise their hands, and we'll get you in the queue. Mayor, our first speaker is Dennis Wyrick, followed by Chris McAllister. Dennis, you should be able to unmute your microphone on your side.
Thank you, counselors. I apologize for cutting in at a, at the wrong time earlier. I'd like to thank you all for your continued service to the stress of times of COVID-nineteen has created. Uh, my name is Dennis Wyrick, and it's been my privilege to be the chairman of the B-PAC Committee, and as an advisory committee to the city of Springfield and the council, I would like to present an overview of our year-end report with our senior traffic planner Emma Newman has provided in your packet under resources and committees' work page, web page. I would like to recognize voting members of our committee as well as our liaisons to Eugene and Willamalane, and our city staff advisors, Emma Newman and Michael Liebler, and our city council liaison Corey Rodley of Ward Three. Some of our key highlights from the twenty-twenty-one have been bike fix-it stations, advising the city on bicycle parking facility upgrades, promoting bicycle and pedestrian service request tools, pedestrian network inventory, capital improvement program, and update recommendations, bylaw updates, and presentations of different type, various types. While I'm not going into a lot of detail, uh, some has already been covered, uh, by, uh, a couple of our, our other, for other voting members. And, uh, details are in your report. And I would, we have one more, uh, voting member that will be, uh, addressing another, another issue, and I'd like to thank you. I would like to encourage more public and community input at our bi-monthly full B-PAC committee meetings. Thank you for your, for this opportunity to share with the city council and the public, and I yield remainder of my time.
Dennis, before you go, I don't think you said what ward you were from.
Oh, where, where I live?
Yeah.
I live outside the city, um, uh, uh, on Upper Camp Creek. I'm not sure where, uh, what.
That, that, that's, that's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Chris McAllister, followed by Claire Roth. Chris, you should be able to unmute on your end.
Thank you, Neil. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, members of the public. My name is Chris McAllister, and I'm coming here officially on my capacity as acting executive director for Carry It Forward. I want to say thank you for your deliberations and your discussion regarding the CBDG or CARES Act funds uh, that were allocated, and I wanted to clear some information that was received a couple of weeks ago when these allocations happened, so you'd have a better understanding about where we're coming from. First and foremost, I'd like to state that we have not only worked with federal dollars, but we've been working with federal COVID dollars for the last two years, and have been able to operate several shelters and programs with those dollars. And so when there was a question about whether we had experience with federal dollars, I wanted to clear that up. I also wanted to clear up three points. Uh, one is about our volunteerism. We are not having a lot of our services provided by volunteers. We're having professionals go without pay, providing the services anyway. There's a very big difference, uh, with how that can be perceived, and so I would just want to say these dollars, when, when, were one of the first times these dollars were allowed to be used for operations. Operations is one of the most underfunded items in social service in this community, and those are the people who get people connected to the places where they need to be, such as the front door assessments, such as the keeping the camp safe, and such as the cleanup and preparations for things. I'd also like to speak to the fact that there was a question about the exactness of the dollars. Because these were operation dollars, we had seventeen thousand, I believe, uh, four hundred and eighty dollars tied to um, our RV program to be able to help move that project forward whenever it was needed. It was meant to be a pool of resource for cahoots, Springfield Police, or other community partners to help us engage and get people off the streets before they lose their home. Because when you lose your home, you have nowhere else to start. I would also like to speak to the moment, uh, the comments about HSC funding for hotels. And, uh, Counselor, uh, Woodrow, you are correct that the HSC does give monies for hotel rooms, but there are money for hotel rooms for uh, fire victims and for people with families. There are not very many options in this county, regardless of funding, for singles or couples who are not, um, in special services. And so we do a lot of those fundings through direct service and through, um, our own general fund. The city of Springfield actually worked with us last year to help cover this gap, and it was the first time singles in Springfield had been helped. We have tireless workers who are serving the underserved. They stand with you in Springfield. We are so proud of the efforts we're doing. We have quadrupled the number of front door assessments, getting people into qualifying houses because of the outreach works. So we stand fast with Springfield. We stand fast with Lane County, and we are proud to be part of the time. Please, uh, continue to support these types of programs because these are your citizens. These are your tax base. These are your future. Take care.
Thank you.
Mayor, your next speaker is Claire Roth, and Claire will be followed by Kevin Shaper. And Claire, you should be able to unmute on your side.
Hello, and thank you so much for being here tonight. Uh, my name's Claire Roth, and I work with Better Eugene Springfield Transportation. First, I'd like to acknowledge that it continues to be such a tumultuous time, and I just want to thank you all for everything that you do in your roles on council and beyond that, um, because I know some of y'all do great stuff in the community outside of what you do here. Um, so I'm here tonight to talk about how important it is to ensure safe transportation infrastructure on West D Street, and specifically dedicated space for vulnerable modes of transportation. I'd also like to echo the phrasing that was used earlier that a long-term solution on West D Street is needed. This connection is the route to downtown Springfield, to homes, to recreation, and to offices for many people. Safer infrastructure on West D Street would usher in economic benefits to Springfield businesses. For example, a recent study showed that cyclists spend about one hundred and sixty-three dollars per week on average at local businesses, compared to one hundred and forty-three dollars among drivers. Safe and comfortable transportation routes for all modes of travel are the indicator species of a flourishing city. Thank you so much for your time.
Our next speaker is Kevin Shaper, followed by Julia Johnson, and Kevin, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, my name is Kevin Shaper, and I live in Ward Two. Uh, and I don't support a shared street solution for West D. Without a motor filter to remove the cut-through vehicle traffic, the volume of bike and car traffic is too high to coexist without causing a stressful experience for everyone involved. Uh, I think this plan cuts too close, uh, this plan puts too much emphasis on the path entry and exit, and not enough on reducing conflicts between people who walk, bike, and drive on West D. I was a member of B-PAC at the genesis of this plan. I remember at the time agreeing with the focus on the path entrance. In the time since, my perspective has changed. I moved closer to the project area. I had a child, and now I spend a lot of time walking in the street um, at the pace of a small child and, and watching, uh, the traffic interactions. Uh, I'm concerned about who the project's been designed for. Uh, discussions are focused on people who ride in the street. When people ride in the sidewalk, side path come up, their experience is largely not centered or addressed. This was true in twenty fifteen, and it's still true today. As you can see in the proposed traffic calming design, nothing about the experience of riding in the space-constrained eight-foot side path will change. As a pedestrian, I'm excited for raised crosswalks, but I don't support the rest. As a pedestrian, I'm excited for raised crosswalks, but I don't support the rest of this plan. For example, why does West D have twelve-foot lanes even after this is done, when we only plan to put eleven-foot lanes on Main Street? People drive on West D like it's a highway, because it has highway-sized lanes. We should, we shouldn't design bike facilities for the most confident cyclists. We should design them to be safe and comfortable for everyone. Counselors, pardon me for presuming, but I think you might be the target demographic that we should be designing for. If this traffic calming plan is implemented, would you choose to ride a bike in the street? Or would you still choose the side path? So that you have to worry about how fast that car behind you wants to go, or how close that truck is going to pass, or hey, there's bikes on both sides of the street. Is that driver really going to try to squeeze to the middle? Or maybe you have no interest in, in riding a bike. Maybe you were walking or running, and you'd feel a lot more comfortable if you weren't sharing the narrow side path with bikes. And, and they were in their own lane. Finally, to briefly address the proposal for raised paths along the river, I have no objection to adding it to the TSP, but I also can't imagine a scenario where we'll find ourselves with seven to ten million dollars that couldn't be better spent improving bike infrastructure somewhere else in Springfield. It's a lot of money to spend for a bike path to get past just thirteen houses. We shouldn't have to spend that much money to do it. We should just put a path on the street for a fraction of the price. Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Julia Johnson, followed by Lizzie Utterbeck. And Julia, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hello, thank you, counselors and public. Counselors, for your service to our city during this time. My name is Julia Johnson from Ward Two, and I have the pleasure of representing the BPAC as a voting member and as an advisory committee to the Springfield City Council. Some exciting actions that we brought forward this year, despite all of the complications of the pandemic, are as follows. One, the BPAC Service Request Tool. Our Safe Streets Subcommittee worked with the city to create more public awareness of this great tool. This allows bicyclists and pedestrians to identify something on our streets that needs repair, such as broken glass in a bike lane, and quickly alert the city with their phone or online. City staff created flyers with this information, and the BPAC members posted them around the city throughout the fall. The link to this tool is included in your packet, and it's listed on our committee's webpage. Two, Springfield Safe Streets Audit, audits. BPAC is inviting you, counselors, and the mayor to participate later this year in our Safe Streets Audits. This will be an important time for counselors to collaborate with BPAC members and partners, such as Better Eugene Springfield Transportation, American Association of Retired Persons, and the Springfield Safe Routes to Schools, to host these audits in each of the city wards using the AARP Walk Audit Toolkit. Our goal is to interact with the public in each ward to identify infrastructure and programming improvements that will increase safety for people who are walking, rolling, and riding throughout Springfield. So stay tuned for your invitations. Three, the West D Street Project. As you've heard, and I too believe, this is the most important action item for council to be considering. BPAC has heard for years from the community about the concerns of this area. And current community members are frustrated that this continues to be a high level of concern, but feel that no sufficient action has been taken. I also live in this area and access these paths regularly, and have my own concerns about congestion and safety. One creative lens that I like, that was presented to us recently from the public, is to redesign West D with a high priority for those who walk, roll, and ride in mind. And this design should make it obvious to those who drive in this space that they are the guests, not the dominant modality. The community supports, or I'm sorry, our, our committee supports moving forward with using immediately available funds on designing and constructing short-term upgrades, including traffic calming elements, sharrows, and North Bank Path transition realignments along West D. But the committee also strongly recommends further consideration of implementing protected bike lanes on West D and a longer-term study with additional community outreach to evaluate the feasibility of an elevated path along the river from the existing North Bank, North Bank Path to Island Park. Finally, I'd like to continue to extend the invitation for the public to comment at our BPAC meetings as your concerns and ideas that you bring forward are invaluable to the work we do. Thank you again so much, all of you for listening.
Mayor, the next speaker is Lizzie Utterbeck, followed by Patrick Kalida. And Lizzie, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hi, this is Lizzie Utterback from Ward Three. I really appreciate what others are saying about how maybe transportation needs in our city, and I hope their recommendations can be moved on. My comment tonight regarding news about Springfield, I've been reported in the Register Bar during the past month. One of the articles I read was about our city's lawsuits compared to our neighbors. This article was published December sixteenth, and it's titled Lawsuits Sins Against Sheriff, 2014, Springfield D, a plot, ten million and five years recognized by the Department of Public Security. Megan writes, between twenty fifteen and early March twenty twenty-one, the Freedom Law Department able to seasonally plead out around nine point nine eight million dollars settlements, will be out of court. Then there's a bullet list that says Green Police Department, three hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars, Lynn County Sheriff's Office, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars, Springfield Police Department, nine point one six million dollars. Megan goes on to say that, quote, Springfield has had at least two more ten million dollar settlements that come for more than ninety percent of the total settlement. I want to note that these lawsuits are not frivolous. They come from serious misconduct or serious harm has been inflicted. So meaningful statements were retired. I know that you won't talk about the lawsuit, so I want to focus on the future and ask that you be proactive by anticipating potential lawsuits and misconduct, which can react policies to specifically mitigate harm. I bring this up because the other interesting news I saw was in the Guard's January eighth article that STD launched with a new drone program. The article explained that the upfront cost for the drones was close to zero, but given our city's tax record, I'm asking you to consider any enhancement of paid law enforcement-related lawsuits and settlements as part of the program's cost. The use of drones, even by private citizens, brings up issues of privacy. So it doesn't take much imagination to envision yet another headline about a lawsuit against STD involving illegal surveillance sites. I was wondering why research has been done to anticipate potential civil rights violations of law rules when it comes to the drone program, and what steps will be taken by the city to mitigate this risk in the future. For example, is it possible to add parameters to drone usage that is only allowed after a warrant?
Our next speaker is Patrick Kalida, followed by Carly. And Patrick, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
All right, great. Thank you. My name's Patrick Kalida. I live in Ward Two. I just wanted to express some disappointment that I have with the current D Street improvement proposals. I bike that route regularly, including today, in fact. So I'm very familiar with the problems caused by the lack of proper separation between different modes of transportation there. I would consider the short-term part of the proposed plan, like the sharrows and the raised crosswalks, to be less than half a step in the right direction. I don't believe it goes far enough to make it a safe and inviting corridor for bikers of all skill levels and people using other modes of transportation. As far as the long-term part of the proposed plan, evaluate, like evaluating the possibility of elevated multi-use path. It, it sounds great, but frankly, I'm a little pessimistic about the chances of that actually happening. And if it doesn't happen, it leaves us with the short-term compromise as the permanent solution. I understand that earlier in the process, a separate protected bike lane was being considered, but it was sort of vetoed by input from a few residents of West D Street. So it seems like those voices were heard disproportionately as compared to the hundreds of people who walk and roll through D Street on their way to and from the river path every day. I'd love to see more consideration given to that protected bike lane idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carly, followed by Holly S. And Carly, you should be able to unmute your microphone. And.
Hi.
Okay, we have you, Carly.
Yes. My name is Carly Vera, and I live in Ward Three. As a bike commuter, I've been riding on West D for over ten years now. In that time, I've noticed two major problems that happen with higher frequency than makes me comfortable. One, people drive vehicles too close when they pass me. This especially happens when I'm riding up the hill. My impression is that because there is a hill, drivers seem to be less willing to give extra space when they pass because they can't see if a vehicle will be coming in the other direction. And because parked cars are on the westbound side of the road, that forces bikes, people on bikes further into the westbound lane than when they are climbing the hill to avoid the potential of getting hit by a car door. This seems to annoy some drivers, and they go by, when they go by, they are uncomfortably close. Two, making the left turn to get onto the river path while traveling westbound on D can be treacherous. I don't know if drivers are unaware that the river path exists, or if they are just tired of having a person on a bike in front of them. But quite often, drivers make the move to pass me at a moment, at a moment when I need to turn, and despite the fact that I have my arm out signaling the turn. I can't see how sharrows or speed cushions will change these two problems. As vehicle, as the vehicle passing me too close or passing me at an unsafe moment isn't going to be solved with just some speed flowing measures. When I listened at the most recent BPAC meeting, I was saddened to hear that they had completely written off the cycle track option. They said it was because the people who live on West D don't want to lose their street parking, but they hadn't asked further in, into the greater Springfield community. Shouldn't we give a safer option, more of a fair shake than that? They also said that it would be unsafe for cyclists because the drivers turning in and out of driveways won't look both ways. But shouldn't those drivers be looking both ways already before they drive across the multi-use sidewalk? And since the cyclists will be riding uphill when traveling westbound on the potential cycle track, they won't be traveling at a high rate of speed, as had been implied at the BPAC meeting. The elevated path option sounds exciting, but if the people who live on West D don't want to lose their street parking, do we think that they'll be excited about losing the river access and direct river view? Plus, the price tag is so large that I can't see it happening within the next ten to twenty years. West D is a gap in the cycling infrastructure. A safe connection between Island Park and the river path is definitely needed. And the cycle track option needs greater consideration, and shouldn't be put on the back burner for painted arrows and a couple of speed humps. Thank you. I concede my time.
Mayor, our final speaker for the evening with their hand up is Holly S. And Holly, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Holly Schaper, and I live in Ward Two. So West D Street is the street that I travel on anytime I need to go anywhere. It is the street that I walk along with my daughter to go to the park and then to the river. It's the street my daughter will someday take to go to school. So the safety of West D Street is deeply personal and meaningful to me. However, West D Street is also incredibly important for the broader community, and will become more important as we strive to shift the modalities of travel for more people as one way to help mitigate carbon emissions and work to slow the climate crisis. Additionally, the more people who can safely get to Springfield to live, work, dine out, go to the theater, or antique shops, the better off we are economically. Unfortunately, West D Street is currently a frightening road to travel on outside of a car. It is rife with conflicts and aggressive driver behavior. I've been passed within inches while carrying my daughter. I've had a driver cross into my lane and drive at me. I've barely moved out of the way fast enough for a speeding driver. I've been crossing the street with my child and dogs when a speeding car suddenly appears. Even more disheartening to me is that the current proposed solution doesn't actually remove any of these conflicts. Bikes and cars will still be expected to share space, and this aggressive behavior will continue to exist, which will in turn continue to push bikes onto the too-narrow sidewalk, which introduces frustrating but far less dangerous conflicts. Given that West D has been the number one priority from BPAC for at least the past six years, my hope was that the solution offer would be one that actually took it off this list so that we could focus on the other areas that need help. With the current proposal, however, that's very unlikely to be the case. Given that none of the options presented are an acceptable solution, and if we move forward with the current plan, West D will continue to be one of the top priorities, since the conflicts that are most problematic would remain. Maybe the city should be engaging in more community outreach with folks who use this corridor, and hiring a design team to come up with creative strategies to adequately address the problems that are present. Hopefully, we can work together to find a solution that actually allows all folks to safely use this street. Hopefully, you'll direct staff to begin a broad community outreach process so that the design can match the needs on the street. Thank you.
Mayor, those are all of the hands for this evening.
Thank you. Any counsel response, Leonard?
Yes, I'd like to just thank Dennis Weirick, Chris McAllister, Claire Roth, and let's see, Kevin Schaper, Julia Johnson, Lizzie Utterbeck, Patrick Kalida, Carly Vera, and Holly Schaper, all for your comments. They, I think that you all raised legitimate concerns, and in particular, I'm hearing a lot of comments about how to make bike traffic safe and accessible. And I think we're all on the same page on making it as safe and accessible as possible. There seem to be a little bit, there, there seem to be varying theories on how to make that happen, but I welcome the debate, and I think that we should, we should keep working toward a solution, because as to, to Kevin Schaper in particular, I'm, I'm not a skilled bicyclist, but I am an enthusiastic one. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. So I also very much appreciate everyone coming and commenting. And I am fortunate enough to get to go to the BPAC meetings and the subcommittee meetings. And so I have been able to listen and be part of the conversations for some time around this. And folks are probably sick of hearing me say this, but also pre-COVID, I got to canvas in that neighborhood and talk to folks and was standing on people's porches and in their yards and talking about the challenges. And I've walked it. And I know that Counselor Mo and I have both, because it's in his ward, I've, you know, been focused on the challenges with this. So I appreciate everyone coming and sharing, and have been encouraging of folks to share those strong opinions. And there are people who have strong opinions, just as was mentioned, about what that looks like from a, from other points of view in terms of how do we share the space? What happens in the neighborhood? How do we slow, what we didn't really talk about is just, one of the number one priorities is just to slow traffic down of all the sorts along West D Street. So I think some, some of the challenges, and I've also met with staff to talk about this and to say, what are our resources? How quickly can we work? And so part of, part of this challenge, I think, is that we can't do everything that we want to do right away. And so there's been this like pacing of like, well, what can we do to slow, at least slow this down? And what can we do to make it safer when you're turning on and off of the bike path and those sorts of things? And it's still not what everybody wants. So I agree with Counselor Stare in that we're not where we need to be. And yet, I think there's a, the strong focus on how do we get there, and how do we get started so that we can start to make improvements and safety improvements? And part of what we, wasn't mentioned here, which is part of it too, is thinking about how do we find the funding to even do the study to figure out what the next best steps are. So like all things in government, it moves slow until it doesn't. But that I just really do appreciate people sharing those strong viewpoints and opinions, because that's important. And we probably haven't heard everything that we need to hear from folks. So, thank you. And I really appreciate the BPAC and the folks who come and work on that, because we, we need that if we're going to look at the future of Springfield. And how do we make it safer for folks to bike and ride and drive and all the things they need to do to get around?
Steve.
Counselor Riley and I both agree on, on West D Street and needing to find a solution. And I drive it a couple of times a day, so I'm sort of used to the traffic bicycles. But today, I met with one of the neighbors, and we stood off the sidewalk on West D Street. I've never seen so much traffic in my life. I know there was traffic. It was incredible. Bicycles, people, cars. It's heavily traveled. And it's, it's very important that we, we solve that problem. So that's where I come from.
All right, anybody else? Here's my, here's my thought is that I think we need more information on West D and what the design is. I would suggest or propose that we just ask the staff to bring it back to us in a work session. At least we can get everybody kind of up to speed and put our kind of hands in the middle about what we're, what we want to do and what we can do. Because we've talked about this for, for, for a long time. And it could range from anything. I think we can lower the speed limit on that road. But like, that's the, that's the pinch point from an infrastructure perspective coming from Eugene. So we just kind of have to take a strategic look at it. All right. Next item, please.
Next item, Mayor, is business from the City Council. We have one, one item. Committee appointments, Springfield Representative to MWMC, Catherine Bishop is here for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. This item is specific to the Springfield's representative on the Metropolitan Waste Water Management Commission, which is Doug Keeler. His term will end on January 31st. And we're seeking to have a reappointment of Doug Keeler, Commissioner Keeler, to the MWMC to continue representing the Springfield interests in MWMC.
Merrily. All right. And how long has he been a commissioner on MWMC?
Well, he actually started in 1997. It's a, it's a citizen representative and there's no fiscal impact.
Oh yeah, like he's, he's a really great guy. I'm really glad that he continues to volunteer with us.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Steve?
Okay, I make a motion that we appoint Doug Keeler to MWMC for the term ending January 31st, 2025.
Second. All right, Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Aye.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Aye.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Aye.
The motion passes and let Doug know that he can keep volunteering for like another 25 years.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Any other business from the council?
Merrily.
Yes, I had a couple of things when I wanted to respond to Chris just a little bit in the sense that we all received an email for the work that was done for the Egan Warming Center in Springfield. Highly complimentary email from a person who had took a pretty good, hard look at how everything was being done. Highly complimentary, the volunteers, the system, the courtesy, everybody was dealt with. I mean, it just, it was just a high, a program of high compliments. And I want to make sure that Chris is aware of that and anybody else that's involved recognizes the fact that we actually did receive an email praising everything that was done. Because that was a, that was an unexpected four or five days of really cold snowy weather. And it was nice to have the compliments come in on how well that was handled. The other thing I wanted to comment on was, I just received a letter, I'm not sure if anybody else did, from NAMI Lane County, just placing their resource center on 9th Street Downtown Springfield. They're the National Alliance on Mental Illness. They're going to have open, open hours. They're going to have resources. I'm, I'm excited to have them in downtown Springfield. I think it's a great, a great opportunity for us to have in our community and close, close access, having them downtown. And like I said, I got, they're going to have literature, they're going to have people, just, just amazing amount of resources that are going to be available, that are critically needed all the time. And so I'm looking forward to what they can add to downtown and what, how the services they can render. So I just received this letter, what was sent out on the 15th. So that I'm looking forward to, to them being a partner downtown.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I had two quick things. On Saturday, Nancy and I joined the Springfield Utility Board as part of their, I guess it was goal-setting retreat, and we spent the morning talking about the city's economic development priorities and how subcontract line policies to support that. So it was a pretty productive conversation about making sure that we were all aligned and working on the same things so that we can move the community forward. Other thing that I wanted to thank you folks about, State of the City dropped and I really appreciated the, the the clips and the additional voices that you guys added at the end of the speech. I think it really helped deliver the, deliver the right message to the community. So thank you. All right, next item, please.
Their next item is business from the City Manager. Item number one, approval to sell city-owned real property at 725 South 57th Street. Bahana Keen is here for the staff report.
Neil, can everybody hear me okay? Wonderful. Thank you, Councilors, Mayor, for your time tonight. I know it's been a little bit of a long night. I am here to request your approval to prepare and list for sale the city-owned property located at 725 South 57th Street. Counselor Woodrow, I know you've taken quite a few questions about this property since it's in your ward. I know that many of us do know a lot of the history on this property, but I wanted to give a brief overview of where we're been for those of you who are not familiar. It was purchased in 2010 for $405,000 with the intent of building a new fire station on the property. Property was leased from 2015 to, to 2018 to two separate tenants and it was a residential rentals. Was determined during that time that it was not going to be used for a fire station. It was no longer needed to be used for that purpose. We had an appraisal done in 2015. We had an additional appraisal done in 2017. And in 2017, ended praise for $385,000. Council prioritized making this particular property available for affordable housing in 2018. Community development staff explored the interest and opportunities available to use the property for affordable housing that year. There was an RFI released in the spring of 2018 and an RFP released in the summer of 2018. And no responses were received from, from those. So it was brought back to the council in fall of 2018 and the council requested additional information from the appraisal to be brought back to them. Fall of 2019, brought back one more time with community development staff to seek direction on the next steps and were told to follow up in early 2020. So there was a bit of a pause, as we all know, in early 2020. It's a pandemic hold. So in spring of 2021, I met, I contacted five agents here in the local area. I toured the property with four and three were interesting, interested in partnering with us to list the property for sale. So all three of them submitted, submitted a comparative market analysis. And those agents are represented respectively by Remax, Windermere, and CW Walker. Ms. Quinn proposed the highest sale price with the lowest commission rate of the three that were received. So that's why we chose to move forward with partnering with her. Her suggestion is to list in early spring and select a date for offers to be received and opened by the council. We can have a review discussion and a formal direction at that time from the council. And council at that time can also determine the best use of funds. It was originally bought out of the general fund. So at this time, I would like to request your approval to prepare and list for sale the city-owned property located at 725 South 57th Street with Ms. Quinn.
Are there any questions? Joe?
Hi, thanks, Bahana. So I'm glad to see that at least someone is thinking about what we paid for it and not accepting any, not anything less than what we paid for it. I am, I am still burnt up over that. I am frustrated over that, very angry over that, how we were duped in my mind. So never again. So I think, I would think even as such that the increase of property values and that type of property, the size of the property itself, we should be able to easily fetch that kind of money. And, and, and above. So do you know what kind of marketing approach they're going to go with? And I mean, do we have any idea what they are going to list it as yet? Or do we have a current appraisal? Do we have any of that stuff?
First listed list price was $495.
So we're listening at $495. And are they going to, are we in a position to where they can open that up for multiple offers? I assume we're going to entertain multiple offers.
That's the plan.
Okay.
I hope.
Yeah, no, I think we should. And I think we should, but we have a bottom line, I assume. Hopefully, it's not the 405. Hopefully, it's like 450. But anyway, we should be able to make a few dollars. We should be able to pay, at least pay for what we've put into it. I mean, we've lost a lot of money on that property through non, non-payment of rents. We've lost, I mean, it's just glad to see it go. Sell it for 5 million. Go ahead. Bye. I'm done.
Thanks, Joe. Any other questions? All right, Steve?
All right, I make a motion to authorize the city manager to prepare and list for sale city-owned real property located at map 18-02-04-11, tax lot 04600 and addressed as 725 57th Street with real estate agent Randy, I can't pronounce that, of Remax Integrity.
Second. All right, it's been moved by Counselor Mo, seconded by Counselor Pictionary. Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Aye.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Aye.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Aye.
All right, motion passes 6 to 0. Next item.
Next item, any other business from the City Manager?
No further business, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Next item, any business from the City Attorney?
No additional business tonight.
All right, so before we, before we adjourn, originally, we were going to return to the executive session to finish Mary Bridget's review since we had technical difficulties. Is it, I'm a, AJ, is it best for us to go back, to stay on this link and wait for everybody to leave or go back to the previous link?
It would be best to go back to the previous link.
Okay. And all right, so we will see you on the 5:30 executive session link. We are adjourned and I will meet you on the other side in the next, thank you, guys.
Yep.